Good morning, everyone. Today is, what is today? March fourth. Oh, this is Army Day. March fourth? Yeah, so, I'm sorry. I get squirreled a lot. Call our meeting to order. And Keith, would you read us in our pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Keith, and thank you for coming to our meeting. It's nice to see your face here. Alright, let's do roll call.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
Here.
Commissioner District Two, Pat Tarzwell.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Truss.
I'm here. Alright, let's move on down to just a quick little announcement. If you're here and you have a cellphone, please turn it down. Or off. Just asking. It's common courtesy. I like it. And now-
She's got a gavel to throw at you because you've been warned if you don't pay attention.
Depending on which-
She sharpened the end.
Alright. Now that's the rest of them. Moving on to item four point one. Do we have any correspondence?
We do. Federal Energy Regulatory Commission sent in a letter regarding Board of Consultants, number one, Archdam Stability Instigation or Investigation, Cushman, number one, Development, Cushman Project. Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent notice regarding a special occasion liquor license for the Martha Reed Foundation. Perry Brestle sent a letter regarding their support for Mason County to purchase Green Diamonds property on Mason Lake and restoring public access. Taylor Jacobs submitted an application for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Vertical Bridge sent a letter informing the county of their closure on the previously announced tower transaction with Verizon. Comcast sent notice regarding a programming advisory. And Mason County Public Utility District, number three, sent notice regarding pole inspections.
Alright, great. Thank you. And we do have a new employee that we thought would be very important to introduce.
Oh, she didn't. I was always threatening you. You're toast.
I thought I was gonna have to invite a lady to this.
Get her, Commissioner, go for it.
Tanille.
Tanille, yeah, my name's Tanille Masteller.
Could you go right up there?
You thought it was gonna be that easy?
And we have Diedrich focus the camera on there. No pressure.
Yep. Close up, Diedrich. Close up.
My name's Tanille Masteller. I started yesterday as the administrative clerk in HR. So replacing Becky Rogers' big shoes to fill.
We're so happy you're here.
Thank you. Thank you. I've been born and raised here in Shelton. I worked at Mason Health or Mason General Hospital for thirteen years, so excited to be a part of the county.
We stole from Mason General Hospital.
You did.
That's good. We're moving up, yeah.
So Mastellers, like the Mastellers, are you related to those?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm married to Todd and my brother-in-law would be Sean. So Raven's my niece.
Well, very cool.
Funny. It's such a small county.
It really is.
Well, I won't hold your sit- Kristen against you.
Okay. Right. Kristen married, we have her.
PD one general manager.
Yeah, so she's-
We work closely with PD one, so.
Got it. Yeah, Kristen married my husband's first cousin. Small-town stuff, I know.
Is that not- I love our home.
Yep, all related.
Alright, well, welcome to Mason County. We're so happy that you're here.
Welcome, yeah, yes, welcome.
And that might be the last time we embarrass you.
We normally don't grill people about their family, but yeah.
Big might, yeah.
You did say might.
Right. Yeah, we are happy you're here. Alright, let's move on to item number five. This is the time we set aside for citizen input. We do have a three-minute per person max. Do we have, we'll start with the room in here. We do have Mark. Mark is our designated timer. So do we have anyone in the room that would like to address? We ask that you say your name, where you're from. Dean.
Dean Hewitt. Born and raised here. Hi. It's been a little minute since I've been here. I just wanted to have a conversation on this cleanup that we're doing out by the Yacht Club. A lot of volunteers, a lot of different mix of individuals, business owners, regular citizens, homeless people, recovery cafe people. It's kind of been a unique situation. There were some tensions at first, but believe it or not, we have a common goal and we're getting it done. I think there's probably close to twenty thousand pounds of garbage that we've removed off that hill so far. I want to segue into a couple of different things. And I see Dave Wyndham here with the Public Health. The needles that we're finding is astronomical. If I would have had a cover, I would have brought in two or three jars so just to show you guys. It's scary. It's spooky. I can understand where, we had a needle exchange at one time where you give a dirty needle, you get a clean needle. Well, apparently that's out the window. Now it's just free-for-all needles out there everywhere. So I understand that you want to keep health concerns to a minimum by having a clean needle. But what are you trading for? So you're trading not having a dirty needle for having it in our environment, for our children, our hikers, our people that use the environment. So now, now they get to deal with the needle. So I'm not sure, we really need to take a look at that because it's, I mean, it's out of control. On a walk one day with Mark Neri and a bunch of individuals, we talked about a five-gallon bucket of human waste and what it can do to the environment. An average American produces seventeen hundred pounds. You take forty people and you start doing the math on that, you end up with over two thousand four hundred five-gallon buckets going directly into Oakland Bay. And now do the math again on the acreage. If one bucket does thirteen, what does twenty-four do? There's over thirty-five thousand acres that can be contaminated. Now, do they use the bathroom outside every single time? Those numbers are actually conservative numbers. So it's something that we really need to think about what's going on with the EPA and the waterway. And I mean, there's, you've seen the pictures, there's garbage and feces and stuff right in the middle of these creeks running right off of that hill into the bay. So I want to make sure that we're very aware of that situation and whatever assistance that we can get from the county and/or the city. Also, keeping an eye on tourism and tourism dollars and what Mason County means and how people come into our community. Even if we just focus on the glaring priorities. Vehicles parked, camping, street camping, I call it. And I know it's not city, whatever else, but you go, you just barely go out into the county, up on John's Prairie, right before you get to Continental Evergreen and stuff, there's a little pole off right there where there's some gas line stuff. There's a couple of vehicles that have been there for months, heading out to the landfill. There's, you know, there's rigs that are parked along there. We need to focus on those and they need to be moved along. And are you sure that's three minutes? Alright, well, thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Dean.
Hello?
And do we have anyone else in the room that would like to comment?
Yes.
Oh, hold on just a moment. Anyone else in the room like to comment?
Look at me. I can't hear. Those coasters in here is too good. I could hear him fine.
I was gonna say, we have devices and stuff for that set up. We need to break them back out again.
Hey, I'm Don Lyles. Been here for a long, long time. And I talked to Randy about the possibility, well, the commissioners about the possibility of a boat ramp. Anything on that?
Not, nothing new or anything like that as we go through the process. It has to go through the parks and stuff, too. There's an actual, there's an actual parks group that things come for to put into our comprehensive plan. We're not allowed to do things that's not in it. So we have to get it in that before we can do anything. That's a lot.
Get busy.
That's all I could. Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Hey, Don, the next, the next time you come in, ask staff about some way to help you with hearing what's going on. We have staff.
Okay, thank you. I can borrow my hearing aids.
Alright, anyone else in the room? Alright, let's go into our Zoom room. Do we have anyone in our Zoom room that would like to state? Alright, is this John?
Yes, my name's John Smith. I wrote an email last week to the commissioners advising them I'd like to speak. And I don't know if I can summarize it in three minutes. I was hoping maybe to get five because of the importance of the question of access to the courts pursuant to the First, the Sixth, and the Fourteenth Amendment.
Well, we limit our time to three minutes and so-
I don't think I can do it. I don't think I could do it in three minutes, but let me-
Well, unfortunately, we'll, we have to stick with the three minutes. So go ahead, John.
Yeah, I did ask in the email for a couple of minutes more than that. The issue is that the public does not have the kind of open access to our courtrooms in this county, in the Superior Court at least, that they have had and should have under the penumbra of the Constitution. And I believe there's a misapprehension on the part of at least one commissioner and maybe others. They feel like that there's a court order in place that mandates that the public's right by Zoom, just like we're having a Zoom session here, but in court be restricted, okay? And they say that this passes constitutional muster because the public can come down in person. Of course, people that are disadvantaged or have handicaps or are geographically undesirable don't have that opportunity. I want to point out that you have the authority and the right to pass county ordinances. Judge Cobb, for example, who signed this order, just this one guy, does not have the authority to pass laws. And there has been no public input on this question. And I know from talking to Judge Cobb personally that he doesn't like the technology, but this is a right that doesn't belong to the court. It belongs to the public and it's a right. And it precedes the United States and it was in common law for centuries. And today, we have the ability to have even more transparency through Zoom. And just because it's more convenient for the court to restrict people's use of Zoom doesn't mean it's proper. And the, and I'm asking for your assistance in considering passing a county ordinance that would be supportive of the public's rights. And the public is wildly in favor of this. It's just a handful of people in the court itself that don't like the technology, but it's not up to them. And finally, I want to say, this falls within the penumbra of the Constitution. Any ambiguity in the law or the Constitution is to go in favor of the public and the citizens, not the court. So the court's trying to restrict this by saying it wasn't mentioned in the Constitution. If that was the standard, we'd still only have a right to have floodlocks and muzzle-loading guns instead of repeating rifles. So the rights, the Constitution and the justices have said the rights of the citizen are not just enumerated in the Constitution. There's as numerous as the stars in the heavens. And this is a right, transparency and it's necessary and it's good public policy. And Judge Cobb does not have the right to moot that aspect of the Constitution or even the penumbra of the Constitution. If there's an ambiguity there, which is the best thing you can say for his position, then that is to be interpreted in favor of the public. And I would like the county commissioners to consider this and maybe invite me to discuss this further since I seem to be the lone voice of the wilderness crying out on this issue. But I can tell you in my discussion with attorneys and people that people appreciate having transparency in government, including and especially in our court system.
John?
And how many of the court doors open to crack is not adequate to that need or to the, not only the needs, but it's just, it's good policy that should be welcomed by the courts and everybody concerned.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. We appreciate your comments. And thank you for your email as well. Alright, next we have Tamara.
Good morning and also apologies for having to leave the meeting early. I have a conflict of schedules. Tamara Ink-Wolson, I work for New Horizon Communities and part of that program is the Shelton Veterans Village. And I am also a resident of Lake Limerick. And I wanted to share some thoughts in regards to the conversations on looking at that you've been having in regards to supporting the housing authority with the possible support for financing an executive director position. And I think a better use of those dollars would be, instead of the eighty-five thousand plus benefits, would be to pay for the cost of a fair market value grant that would then do the study of all of the rents in Mason County and then the result of which would most likely have those vouchers increased. So having those rental vouchers that the Mason County Authority receives for paying for their units, Crossroads receives for their units, and the landlords that they partner with, and all of the different entities that utilize those vouchers would be able to have vouchers that are a higher value, which then also opens up more opportunities for other rental opportunities that current voucher levels may not support for their clients. And so that's helping to be a broader economic driver. And also by having those higher voucher values for the housing authority units, then that's giving them more income that they can then use as they're talking about as a board, how to reorganize whether or not having an executive director at this point in time in their structure and organization is the right move. And maybe paying for a consultant to help them with all of those things, however that works, but it would help to increase their revenue being able to do that. So this, I think, would be a more long-term, sustainable way for assisting not just the housing authority, but all of the different housing providers who utilize vouchers and helping their partners as well. And so I just wanted to share those thoughts that I'm glad that you're thinking about ways to help housing and providers in our community. But there are more ways that we can look at it from a bigger picture and have a stronger impact and a bigger return on that investment. And I know that there were concerns shared in the past about, you know, well, if that grant was funded by the county, that it would just help one or two agencies. And so this conversation with possibly funding the executive director position is counterintuitive to those thoughts. So I think a better way to help the housing authority and all of the other providers that utilize the voucher process and the partnerships with their landlords and opening up more opportunities for tenants. And then that opens up more housing opportunities. So someone can go into a higher income rental because of that voucher than there are some other lower rental prices that other families and individuals. So it helps to spread that around and help more people get housed and supported. So thank you. And again, apologies for having to leave early.
No worries. Thank you, Tamara. Alright, do we have anyone else? Alright, let's move on to item number six.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda items.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Let's move on to item number seven.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the minutes. February tenth and February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five briefing minutes. February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, regular meeting minutes as presented. Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of February tenth and February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five briefing minutes, and February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, regular minutes. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, this is, we move now on to our action agenda. Commissioners will read through the action items. Any item can be removed for separate discussion and vote. Commissioner Netherland, if you could take item eight point one through eight point three. Commissioner Tarzwell, eight point four through eight point six. And then I'll take the remainder.
Madam Chair, item number eight point one reads, approval of warrants and treasurers, electronic remittance, claims, clearing fund, warrant number eight-one-one-one zero-seven-zero through eight-one-one-one-two-one-two, the amount one million one hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred seventy dollars sixty-four cents. Direct deposit fund warrants number one-one-four zero-zero-five through one-one-four-four-two-zero, the amount nine hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars thirty-six cents. Salary clearing fund warrants number seven zero-zero-eight-seven-one-eight through seven-zero-zero-eight-seven-four-five, the amount is six hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars ninety-eight cents. Item number eight point two, approval to convert two unfilled permanent part-time positions in juvenile detention to one single permanent full-time position with full benefits. Item number eight point three, approval of the notification of the final cost of county road construction projects completed in twenty-twenty-four performed by the county forces in the amount of, what have we got? We have nine hundred fifty-three thousand two hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents.
Item eight point four, approval for the chair to sign the amendment to the inter-local agreement with Central Mason Fire Emergency Services, EMS, adding the provision of fire protection and emergency medical services for the public works facility. Item eight point five, approval of the public works to remove liens on three properties and file formal notice against each property. Eight point six, approval of the county administrator to sign the Puget Sound partnership contract for the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Item eight point seven, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at nine fifteen a.m. to consider sale of real property at Seven Public Works Drive, Shelton, Washington, parcel number four-two-zero-zero-two-dash-one-three-dash-nine-zero-zero-seven-zero for four hundred and sixty-five thousand to David C. Bailey and/or assigns. Item eight point eight, approval to appoint Bernie Games to the Mason County Parks and Trails Advisory Board for a four-year term expiring March fourth, twenty-twenty-nine. Alright, commissioners, having read through the action agenda, are there any items you would like to have removed for separate discussion or vote? Nope?
Nope.
Anyone out there like anything removed for a separate discussion or vote? Nope? Alright, then I will call for a motion.
Madam Chair, go ahead. Madam Chair, I'm trying to rush it through for, she's got a meeting. Madam Chair, I move for approval of our action agenda as presented. Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the action agenda as presented. Any discussion? None? Alright, I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item number nine. Do we have any department heads or elected officials that would like to say anything? No, nothing. Alright. Well, then, let's move on to, well, we have no public hearings at this time. So we will move on to item number eleven, boards, calendars, and reports. Commissioner Netherland, if you could go first. Commissioner Tarzwell, and then I will follow.
Okay, I'm gonna have to go on brail on some of this. I don't have it all down before me. But left board meeting just for this, meet with somebody at the contractor out in our area to try and make some inroads to find for work here locally as a ready-mix company. Please, if you got an opportunity, North Mason is in the state championship for basketball. It's the first time in thirty-six years. I'm gonna try my best to go and attend, of course. I'm from North Mason. But I gotta tell you, if anybody else wants to, please join in. Go up there. They had an issue. We're not able to supply a bus for the- They had an issue. We're not able to supply a bus for the kids to go and for the instruments and everything to go. If we can find a way to get past that, I hope they do, but it doesn't look like they will. So please, all of us need to show up if we can to show support for that. I have a rotary meeting. I may attend Timber County just as a viewer. No comments. I don't know some of my other stuff. We have an elected, a meeting of the electeds and directors meeting coming up. I may or may not be able to attend that. It's looking kind of hard right now. I may have to go. Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority Planning Team meeting. A Chamber of Commerce meeting. And I know I've got a few more, but I apologize if I come up with something, I'll announce it on Monday to let everybody know. I have a shortage in my phone.
No worries.
On Thursday, I'll be going to the sheriff's breakfast up at Spencer Lake. Friday, I will go, we have an active shooter Zoom presentation. I don't remember who that's by. I think that's Emergency Management, but I'm not sure about that. Then I'll be planning on going up to the Hootsport Lunch for the sheriff at Oyster Bank on Friday. Saturday, I've got a meeting with the citizens group that is organizing the 250th anniversary celebration for the signing of the Declaration of Independence. So that's a year away on July 4th. That'll be our 250th anniversary. So there's a group of citizens that are trying to organize events around that, so I'll be attending that meeting. Then Saturday evening, I'll be going out to Fire District 12. They have a fundraiser dance, which I will not be dancing, but I will be out there supporting their efforts. Then we have our commissioner briefing Monday morning and a Fire District 12 meeting that evening, so I'll be at that one. We have that elected meeting with the elected officials and directors at Mark's office next Tuesday morning. I've got two more items. Is there all like, everything says plus two, plus two, plus two. There's already, great.
There's a few things.
Then next Wednesday. I'm going blind. I'm sorry. We have...
Share glasses.
Oh, Criminal Justice meeting next Wednesday at 7:30 in the morning. Then Thursday, 7:45, we have the EDC Board meeting, 9 o'clock. Mason County Cares. I'm not sure what that is, so I'll have to look into that further. That pretty much covers it for the next couple weeks. I don't know what the other plus twos are.
You'll know when they come up.
Yeah, well, when it gets there, I'll dig into it.
That's right. So I do have a Public Works broadband meeting following this one. LSC Roundtable Wednesday night. LSC meeting Thursday morning. Timber County's caucus meeting following that, and I'm the chair of that one this year, so it's kind of cool. Mason County Tourism Workshop on Thursday night. Should be fun. It'll be at the High Still. And I will, I'm gonna try to make the Sheriff's Community conversation at the Fjord, I guess, the Oyster Bank. And then another WASAC meeting.
We'll both be at that one.
Yeah, yeah. Then a WASAC meeting to discuss some bills that are coming our way. They're very friendly, believe me. Women's group tea party planning for our tea party. It's very cool. We have a fashion show. It's a lot of fun. Well, Ted and I will also be at the Fireman's Dance, but I doubt that I can get Ted on the floor to dance. We're going to Top Golf. If you guys have never been there, you should go. It is so much fun. But we're going with the family to celebrate birthdays and stuff. Briefing on Monday, WASAC Virtual Assembly, elected officials meeting, local emergency planning meeting. Then there's the Business After Hours for the Chamber, Public Works Board Day on the Hill is all day Thursday. Friday morning is a Public Works Board meeting, LSC Virtual Update, WorkSource, man, tongue-twisters, WorkSource Young Adult Hiring Event. And then every Friday, we all also meet. Mark, Deb, and I meet to talk about session bills and our concern or not concern for some. And then we're back on Monday for our briefings and another WASAC assembly. All right, and I'm sure if we are at any events during that time, we'll announce them just so that we can let people know where we are, what we're doing. All right. Anything else?
Madam Chair, move for adjournment. Second.
All right, we are adjourned.
You've got one minute to get to your meeting.